It is now one o'clock PM. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Director Kimbry Peak from Rockdale Water Resources.
May we say, "Good afternoon."
Hi, staying after.
Good afternoon. May we bow our heads?
Okay.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from all evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory. Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us here today in service to the people of Rockdale County. Grant us the wisdom, clarity, and unity as we discuss and make decisions for the good of our community. May our words and actions reflect integrity and actions, fairness, respect for all. Bless our leaders, staff, and citizens with peace, health, and strength. We ask for your guidance and protection over our county today and always. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen, and thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we'll start with public comment. And if anybody is interested in speaking, make sure you thought the yellow card. We have Ms. Corliss Turner.
Don't count this as my minutes. I just wanted to say good morning. You were talking.
Good morning.
Okay. I just wanted to speak on, I looked at the agenda and I looked at the PTO information. And one thing I wanted to share, I wasn't able to be at the meeting last week, but the, some of those days were given, and I think you remember Commissioner Williams, was given during the pandemic additional sick days, and that was because of the pandemic and most people were all five, maybe 10 days. But the pandemic American Rescue Plan was not for recurring expenses. So I think that any expenses that were created using that money should be eliminated across the board. An example would be the assistant that was done in 2022 with Andre Thomas, and it was used, the pandemic money. Then after it expired, they were rolled into the budget. Those are some undue, unnecessary expenses to the citizens. As far as vacation time, which is the same as PTO, with AT&amp;T, you got one week after six months and two weeks after year. You didn't get five weeks until 25 years and 20 at four years, I mean at 20 years, four at 20 years. I've also researched DeKalb County and Newton County PTO policy, and I think that you all should not make a decision today, and I think you should do some research. I do know the Georgia law has no policy on that, but you don't have to even pay out PTO time if someone separates from the company undesarably, I would say, but if someone resigned, that would only be fair. So what I'm asking is that you just review this information, check with Tony Holmes, which I did, just verify my thinking was correct. They were given extra days with money that in the, the op says, "Do not use it for reoccurring expenses for temporary money." Those are the words that they use. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Madam Chair, second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. We have approval of the minutes for September 9th of 2025.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we have unfinished business.
So item 456 is with Human Resources. It's a policy update, an amendment to Policy 2006 dash four dash eight, PTO paid time off, and Director Holmes will be presenting this item.
Good afternoon. Madam Chair, Commissioners, item 2025 dash four five six is the proposed amendment to our employee PTO paid time off policy. I did want to just kind of revisit what was presented from last week in terms of the amendment. Last week's proposal from September 9th was the recommended changing for the director's PTO accrual. The recommended change from last week, I'm sorry, was from a five-year service credit, which is seven hours per pay period, or 4.5, five weeks annually, to a one-year service credit per pay period, or six hours per pay period, equating to 3.9 weeks annually. This change also modified the PTO payout. So going from the five weeks to the one, going from the five years of service to the one year of service, changed the PTO payout from 100% to 75%. The proposed effective date from last week was a September 1st effective date. So that would not impact anybody that was hired prior to that September 1st date. So that was what was before you on September 9th. I also handed out in front of you, you do have in front of you what was proposed for last week. I also have for you for discussion what's being proposed for this week. And that also has the exact same change for the directors, changing the credit service from the five years to the one year, so that would remain the same in what's proposed before you today. What's being added additional with the PTO is adding an additional one hour per pay period for each tenure, for each level. That equals an additional 26 hours of PTO annually. The effective date, and I want to make sure I'm clear on this part of it as well, the effective date for what's proposed before you right now would be January 1, 2026. So it would not impact anyone, this proposal, this portion of it would impact employees, but there's portions of it that would not impact the employees hired prior to that date. So the revised PTO payout structure, I know we've talked about that as well. So it also includes a revised PTO payout structure, again, only to impact anybody hired after January 1. The revised PTO payout structure would be as follows. Anyone that was here less than one year would be 0%. Anyone between one to five years would be 50% payout. Five to 10 years would be 75% payout, and 10 or more years would be 100% payout. So again, I want to state, just for everybody listening, this proposal would not impact anybody that's currently here or anybody that is hired prior to January 1, 2026. Employees hired before that date would remain at the current PTO payout as it is stated. So that's the proposal that's here before you. So again, just to reiterate, additional one hour of PTO per tenure tier level, which would be an additional 26 hours of PTO annually, revising the PTO payout schedule, as I just stated, for those individuals hired on or after January 1, 2026. Those employees hired before that will remain at our current PTO payout schedule. So those are the two things that we talked about. What was proposed last week, which was a change to the director's schedule, that one proposed for an effective date of September 1st, was proposed for you this morning, proposed for an effective date of January 1, including that additional 26 hours, as well as that revised PTO payout.
Madam Clerk, can we take these individually?
So you mean when you take individually the requested amendments to the policy?
Correct.
Yes, you can.
Is that good?
Mm-hmm.
Is that good?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. So can you present the first item that you spoke about?
I can.
So we can present that.
Yes, the very first thing, which was actually proposed on both of them, which is the change or the amendment to the director's service granting. So going from the five-year service granting to the one-year service granting, that would be the first thing, and that was presented on both proposals.
Okay.
And that's effective January 1st.
One of, the one from last week was effective September 1st, 2025. The one for this week would be effective January 1, 2026.
So Madam Chair and Commissioners, if I might, if you propose an amendment, you could propose the amendment for the five-year to the one-year, as well as the suggested effective date as well.
Okay.
So, so we're actually amending what we did last week as well as?
Yes.
Something else.
That's the answer. It, because.
Okay, I think it's confusing because I thought we did vote on that last week and it was approved.
No, it was deferred. The policy was deferred.
The sick leave, removing the sick leave was approved.
Okay. Yes. We repealed the sick leave, which would be effective January 1, 2026. Sick leave is no longer a part of this. This is PTO.
Okay. So I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the change so that directors would have one year, when they come in, earned PTO, and that would be effective, as we discussed before, September 1st.
Do you have a second to that motion?
I don't think so.
Okay. Motion fails. All right, so I'll let you try.
Well, I would make the same proposal, except effective January 1st.
So I think the reason that we went ahead and did that is because the time was right and that we have our directors on staff, and we were trying to go ahead and make that change so it wouldn't be confusing for anybody else hired moving forward, and that they, there was just really no reason to wait when we discussed it earlier. So that's what we talked about with the sick time as well. No, sick time was January 1st.
Okay. So Commissioner Williams, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we change the, the director's accrued PTO from zero to five years to one year that they receive upon employment effective January 1st.
Okay, now, I didn't get a chance to respond because we were going so fast.
Oh, sorry.
Please, but I was actually going to second your motion.
I'll listen it again.
Who reports to the Senate, Madam Chair, regarding that question for HR?
Yes.
And that is, would this September 1st date retroactively apply and affect anybody in a category at this point in time?
Yes, it would.
Oh, it would?
But I could be talking about it. But I need more facts before we go forward. I can have a sidebar come back to this later.
Sure.
Chair, do you want to proceed with your meeting now? I can have a sidebar come back to this.
Sure, we'll go, if it's okay, we'll move to new business while you all have a conversation. Okay?
All right. So we're moving to new business, and we will come back to item 456. Okay, item 457 is with Exelon Dewatering Solutions Incorporated through the Water Resources Department to supply diesel bypass pumps and Springwood Drive and Rockbridge Two Pump Stations. The amount is $201,830.51. This is plus 10% contingency fee of the $20,183.05 for a total of $222,013.56. This is 180 days from the notice to proceed unless terminated. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Would the board like me to keep going?
Yes.
Okay, we will take some items collectively. Item 458 is with Duke's Root Control through Water Resources Department to control sewer line tree root intrusion. It's a unit price contract and the amount not to exceed $40,000. This is for one year with option to renew, two additional one-year terms. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 459 is with Dusty Greer Roofing Incorporated through the General Services Department for roof replacements for the sheriff's office. This is $1,134,735, includes a 5% contingency. And for Johnson Park is for $241,395, includes a 5% contingency. So the total contract amount is $1,376,130. This is 120 days from the notice to proceed unless terminated. This is host funded and is a budgeted item.
Sorry, I have a question about that one. Okay, so it's a replacement of the sheriff's office. What is being replaced at Johnson Park?
Roof on both of them.
The roof.
The roof of what?
On both of them.
The recreation center. The center is the flat part of the roof that is leaking. In fact, the first week the director was here, she texted me saying they had buckets in the center. It's so many leaks.
Okay, so I just read it wrong?
Yes.
It would have been, okay.
Would you like to take?
A comma would have helped.
Yes, the speed reading does not help at all, does it? Okay, would you like to take item 457, 458, and 459 now?
Sure.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve items 457, 458, and 459 as presented. And I do want to say that item 458, that's a very good contract that put a lot of liability on the contract. I like that.
Okay.
Yes, that was a very good one, as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Director Peak, will you just quickly come tell us about what that contract 458 is going to allow us to do?
Okay, the contract 458 is with Duke's Root Control. Duke's Root Control, it's pretty much as, as a chemical that we use in our sanitary sewer lines. This, it destroys roots. Roots causes sewer lines to back up. So it causes backups in homes. So once we treat our main sewer line, that main sewer line affects the, our service lateral branches that goes into the homes of the citizens.
And then that root control, they're liable if it damages the rest of the tree or any other vegetation that's connected to their root, according to the contract.
Okay, now, can you repeat your course? Can you say?
No, I'm just making a statement that they are responsible for replacing any damage or anything that's done as a result of using those chemicals.
Okay, now, who is responsible? The, the company?
The contract. Yes, they are.
Correct. The root control chemical is actually put in, inside the service line, so, inside the sewer line, main sewer line, I'm sorry. So there's no way it can affect, but absolutely, if, if something happens, absolutely, they are responsible for it.
Even if it spills on the ground near it?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I read that.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 460 is with Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction through the Transportation Department. This is to add the remaining portion of the Bethel Road from Field Road to State Route, State Route 20, to the resurfacing project limits measuring .25 miles. This is change order number two to Contract 2024 dash 202. The amount is $96,624.30. The current contract amount is $2,889,080 plus $96,624.30 for the new contract total of $2,985,704.30. This is 60 days from notice to proceed, and this is blast funded.
So did we have unanticipated reasons for having to increase the amount, the contract, or is it?
So Director Kelly, come to the podium. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. So this specifically for, when we were looking at the full depth replacement of these roads, there was a portion that was small, right beside, there's a church right there on Field Road. It was almost, that we didn't catch that. So we wanted to, with the abilities that we had there, try to catch that while we were there, because it was in disarray. You had trees on, on each line, we need to do some ditching to, to save that road, similar to what you spoke about, the tree roots had taken over some of those utilities, they do the same thing to the road. So we need to salvage that road. So this change order was specifically for that, to bring that value and that life back to that road. And so the sec, the next one is also similar on a different portion of Bethel, because Bethel runs kind of horizontally across the county over several different areas, and trying to get that life back in the road so we can have it last 15 to 20 years for us.
Thank you. I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second for Contract 460. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 461 is with Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction through the Transportation Department. This is to add a portion of Bethel Road from West Hightower, I should say, West Hightower, to Irwin Bridge Road to the resurfacing project limit measuring at .42 miles. This is change order number three to Contract 2024 dash 202. The amount is $169,426.20, which is the current contract amount, will now be $2,985,704.30. And the change order number two was approved, so the amount is $169,426.20 for the new contract total of $3,155,130.50. This is 60 days of notice to proceed, and this is blast funded.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Director Kelly, can you just tell me the total length of the road that's being paved? Do you know that?
Are you ready?
Okay, that'll be good. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 462 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Echotech for Fluoride Feed Pump Replacement System. The amount is $38,300. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 463 is the Adoption Resolution for the Capital Improvements Element 2025 Annual Update for Rockdale County, Georgia. We had sent our transmittal resolution back in August to DCA and ARC for approval, and it has come back for your approval today.
All right, Madam Chair, I move to approve this resolution as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 464 is with a policy, this is for the emergency purchase ratification policy.
I move to approve the policy as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second for the public. Madam Clerk, will you just talk about this for a minute?
I will. So sometimes we receive items that are outside of our normal approval process, such as maybe a pipe replacement or something that has to be done in an emergency situation. So this policy outlines the method in which we could act outside of our defined processes and procedures so that we can take care of those emergency items.
Very good. All right, I have a motion and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 465 is a requisition through Fire Rescue Department for all safe industries for 24 hazmat suits for the fire department for the special operations team. The amount is $29,972.82. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second for Contract 465. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 466 is with Solia Digital Media for the Fire Rescue Department. This is for the website add-on for burn permit requests. This is change order number one, a Contract 2021 dash 214. The initial price was $374 and includes a one-time setup fee of $175 with annual renewals of $199. This is for one year with automatic renewals until terminated. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. And before we vote, can I get Deputy Director, Deputy Chief, sorry, Perkins to come to the podium to explain our burn permit policy? Would that be you?
If it's okay with you and I, if our mark is not there.
That would be great, sorry.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
So the, the add-on for the burn permits, it's a new, we're taking applications now. Georgia Forestry used to do it years ago. They quit in 2001 for the whole state. It was just too much for them to handle. So we're following their rules and regulations. This doesn't add on anything but makes it user-friendly for us to take application of who's burning in the county. It also has a list of guidelines that they affirm to when they fill out the application as far as making sure water hose can reach it, make sure they're with it all the time, make sure it's out before dark. It also makes it where I can turn it on and off. Last year, we had a number of wildfires get out in the county. It exhausted some resources pretty heavily throughout that timeframe. Makes it where I can turn these on and off. So the application's free, they just got to go to Rockdale County Fire Rescue. When they go to the website, a little box pops up, it takes them directly to the permit application. They just fill it out, submit it. It's only good for one day, it expires at dark, and it's just, they go on the next day. It'll actually post on there as well of who applied for a permit. So if you're wondering if your neighbor's outside burning, did they get a permit? You can log on there, you can see it as well.
Oh, that's good.
And it lists the address of who actually applied for permit that day, and it makes it easier so we can track it as well.
Great. Excellent job.
Any more questions?
Thank you for the explanation, I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 467 is an expenditure request of Axon Enterprise through the Sheriff's Office. This is for TASER handles. The amount is $32,854.88. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 468 is an expenditure request through Axon Enterprise for the Sheriff's Office. This is a TrueUp Fleet 3 Advanced, and the amount is $46,011.04. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 469 is rezoning case 2025 dash 09, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 2880 Southwest Highway 212 from C1 Local Commercial to, Local Commercial District to C2 General Commercial District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
All right, can I have Director Gardner come to the podium to tell us more about this?
Actually, I need to turn over to him, because I couldn't picture where they could be putting this. I don't know.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, this actual rezoning is the Publix Shopping Center on 212. And so the applicant is asking for this change in zoning category from C1 to C2.
So the, so just to be clear, the shopping center owner for Publix is asking for a change?
This would be just the ex- This would be just the actual tenant for this particular area, um, on the end of the shopping center.
And what, can you tell me a little bit more about why we would want to do that, or what their interest is?
Their interest is to put a commercial automotive retailer in that space, in one of the spaces.
I think it's the AutoZone, but.
It'll be like an auto parts store, yes.
In the plaza or on outside of the plaza?
It would be on an adjoining suite.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds like we need to send it to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Yes, I am.
Item 470 is rezoning case twenty-two-five dash ten, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning twenty-nine ninety-two Southwest Highway one fifty-five from C-one Local Commercial District to C-two General Commercial District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
And I move to approve the first read and to refer the ordinance to the Planning Commission.
Ma'am Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Director Gardner, can you talk, speak about this one as well?
Just a second. Okay, again, this is similar, um, on Highway one fifty-five. Um, they're requesting a more intense, well, a lesser intense zoning from C-one to C-two.
Can you tell us what's proposed there?
So what's being proposed here is an emissions station and a window tint and detailing, um, business.
What kind of station?
Emissions testing.
Oh, emissions testing.
So it's like a hut?
And window tinting.
I make a motion to, um, refer this to the Planning Commission.
I thought we already made a motion.
No, for the second.
Just a vote. You had a motion and a second, and I'm supposed to vote.
No, we didn't. Don't think so.
Oh, we didn't?
No, no. Because she came up, she asked her after you read it.
Oh, okay.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second that motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Item four-seventy-one is tax amendment case twenty-two-five dash eleven, an ordinance to amend subpart A, general ordinances of the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended to amend Chapter ten, Alcohol Beverages, Article two, Division one, Section ten dash thirty-three D. License required, time limit for commencement of operation, Section ten dash thirty-eight, preliminary approval required, operation, Section ten dash thirty-nine B. Denial of license application granting, Section ten dash forty-one. Moral character of licensee granting, Section ten dash fifty-one D. Transfer of licenses prohibited, change of location, Section ten dash fifty-one G. Transfer of licenses prohibited, change of location, Section ten dash fifty-two D. Special provisions on revocation or suspension, Section ten dash sixty-three A. Considerations for granting applications for alcoholic beverage license handling permits, Section ten dash sixty-three B. Considerations for granting applications for, oh, sorry, considerations for granting applications for alcoholic beverage handling permits, Section ten dash sixty-eight E. Off-premise sales of alcoholic beverage licenses for catered functions to provide for repeal of conflicting provisions, to provide for an adoption date, and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I have a question in reference to this, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. Why are we amending this, and what does this amendment actually mean? Please.
So this particular amendment, there are certain sections in Section, Chapter ten that speaks to, um, the Board of Commissioners having to approve, um, items as relates to different alcohol licensing. And so to expedite or make the process less of a burden on the applicant, um, we suggested changes on the language so that the approvals would have to, um, be approved by the Chair instead of coming through the entire BOC process.
So I would like to expound a little bit on that too, Director Gardner and, and Board. One of the issues that we've had, uh, for a couple of years, um, trying to clean up some of the, I'm just gonna say it, archaic processes in our code, is this one. And this is a leftover from, uh, years ago when every single license and permit had to go before the Board of Commissioners. And so right now, this is the only one that's left that's, um, an administrative function that would need to be, of course, the, the majority of the work is done by the Sheriff's Office, because they do the background checks and the fingerprinting and that kind of thing. And that in itself probably takes about, you know, a month or whatever to go through that whole process. And then our code says that the Board of Commissioners shall approve every alcoholic beverage license that comes through. So you can imagine, if you think about all the places that have alcoholic beverage licenses and permits and that kind of thing, if you don't have a board meeting, uh, you don't get your license. So we're looking at months before sometimes people can get their actual, uh, license. So as we are going through and cleaning up some of our processes, this is one of them. I know Commissioner Williams can remember where we've had to have called meetings in December, because it's time for renewals. And, uh, the way our code is written, that you have to have your renewal in by December thirty-first, well, if we don't have a meeting, you don't get a license. So this is one of those areas that, uh, we thought, you know what, let's start, and let's start drafting and getting something, um, on the books that is a little bit more, uh, up to date with the times. So that's a long way of saying that this has been a long time coming, so, uh, now you can go to planning and you can get your, uh, business licenses and your permits, and then once they finish up with everything they need to do, they'll send the alcoholic beverage licenses over here, and we can get them signed and on their way.
Okay.
And I would like to add one more thing. If we could, just do the first reading today. That way, we've got more time for the county attorney to also, uh, review and just make sure we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's, so.
Okay.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the first reading.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I want to thank, uh, Madam Clerk for bringing this to our attention. Certainly, as we continue to be the best place to do business in the state of Georgia, that, that is certainly the goal that we have collectively. And so I just want to thank, um, my colleagues for that support with things like this that need to be cleaned up so that we can move business forward in Rockdale. Thank you.
Okay, item four-seventy-two is tax amendment case twenty-two-five dash twelve, an ordinance to amend subpart B, planning and development of the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended to amend Title two, Land Use and Zoning, Chapter two oh six, Base Zoning Districts, Section two oh six dash ten, O and I Office Institutional District, and Chapter two fourteen, Standards Applying to All Districts, Section two fourteen dash one, Dimensional Standards of Zoning Districts, Table two, Development Standards for Non-Residential Zoning Districts to Provide for Repeal of Conflicting Provisions to Provide an Adoption Date and for Other Purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
Ma'am Chair, I second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
And so, Madam Chair and Board, we can go back now to the item we had under unfinished business, which was the PTO policy amendment.
Director Holmes?
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, just following up on that first portion, which we spoke directly pertaining to the director-level PTO accrual pertaining to the service credit. Um, it is recommended that this policy take effect today, um, in order to not adversely impact, um, existing employees or any class of employees. So that is the recommendation, that it take effect for any employee going forward.
Okay. So.
I make a motion that we approve, that we approve this policy effective today.
I second the motion.
I'm sorry, did you want to say? I was just gonna seek clarification when you say this policy, um, what exactly, what provisions in the policy amendment?
This is specifically about the director PTO accrual level for the service credits that we're speaking to.
So we're just taking that piece right now?
It would move to one-year credit when they start.
So I would, um, request that the Board revise your motion to include that what you're voting on right now is the five-year to the one-year.
Okay.
Right, okay.
I'll re, I'll.
Thank you. Restate, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, change our current PTO policy to be, uh, to move from a five-year earned credit to a one-year earned credit effective today for all director.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, the motion carries.
And now the other pieces?
Part two, yeah. So the second thing that we talked about was the additional PTO accrual for all employees. So this one would impact all employees regardless of hire date. It is a one, one additional hour per pay period for each tier. It equals, uh, equals twenty-six additional hours of PTO annually. The effective date for this one proposed is January one, twenty-twenty-six, for your discussion.
I move to approve the, um, that policy. Do I, I don't, say that again, son?
I would hesitate saying policy, I would say the provisions or the piece that you're talking about.
Amendment?
Amendment, yes.
Okay, so I move that we, um, approve the amendment to change the PTO policy? Did I get that one right?
Yes, I'm gonna read it again.
Okay.
So this provision is additional PTO accruals for all employees. It would be one additional hour per pay period for each tier, which equals twenty-six additional hours of PTO annually. The effective date for this, or the proposed effective date, is January one, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, let me try this again. I move to approve the PTO accrual date changes as presented.
All right, okay. Ma'am Chair, I second the motion.
Okay, we do, effective date?
I don't think.
June, yeah, effective January one, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All, um, actually, questions? Um, I, I have several questions. So I wanted to know what the budget impact would be for this motion.
I don't know.
Okay, do you?
No, but I know that, um, it would just be the accrual for, um, one additional PTO hours, and it adds twenty-six, so we're, the sick leave was forty, so it offsets majority of the forty hours that, um, sick leave that was eliminated.
Okay. And Commissioner Williams, can you talk about all the days that currently we, we afford, um, employees in Rockdale County?
Well, we have twelve, thirteen holidays.
Thirteen.
Thirteen holidays. Um, and we did have five-day sick leave, which we took away last week. And this is just an attempt to replace some of those sick leave days, um, so that, so that people have an option. We don't want people coming to work sick. I think that's the biggest thing, is, you know, everybody is still very aware of viruses and bacterias and germs that are spreading around, and if there's no, um, you know, sick leave, people are gonna come to work sick.
And what percentage of people use all their PTO and sick time?
I have no idea. Do you?
Um, we've had a lot of conversations about that, and Director Holmes and I have talked, um, on a number of occasions while we were evaluating the, um, ARPA-funded vacation days. And so historically, looking back, what we found was that, um, for many of the departments, because those vacation, the, um, sick time was granted right away, that you had brand-new employees taking the sick time, and especially this time of year through Christmas, you have a lot of employees that will use sick and vacation, and it puts challenging complications for all of our directors, especially in our first responder divisions. So our Fire Department, law enforcement, and many of the other divisions, it is hampering services delivered for, um, especially, like I said, those first responders. So when we looked at the sick days that were funded by ARPA during the pandemic, that was gonna be about a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar impact on the budget. So moving those cost savings to the budget for twenty-two, from, for twenty-twenty-six was going to be an opportunity for us to look at our workforce reinvestment, which would be able to look at that money and help us fund some of the things that we have coming forward, which were, um, the increases for fire, fire and rescue, as well as law enforcement. And so that helped offset some of the cost of those increases, along with the COLA that was approved. And so that gave us a better picture of financially where we would be next year, with the goal being that we could afford performance reviews, um, next year. But we don't have a funding mechanism for those performance reviews at this time. So, uh, my initiative is really to take cost savings and, and really invest those on the front end so that we could raise the starting wages and some of the, um, salaries for people that are working at the county. I think our younger people especially look at that dollar amount that they see coming in, and they decide whether it's gonna be a good fit or not. And so the more that we can do on the front line, I think is gonna be very much a drawing card for people considering working at Rockdale County, as well as, um, reward our current employees as well by making that financial investment.
So I think, I feel like we hear, we hear of employees who are leaving us, especially law enforcement and Public Safety Fire Department, for other communities, because they get paid more.
Right.
And I, um, this amendment to that policy that was, that we talked about last week gives a little bit back for new employees to consider when deciding whether to come to Rockdale for less money, but they have more, some extra benefits. So I'm still in favor of it.
Okay. So I can tell you, I, I've never heard, Director Holmes, you might have said this, but I've never heard you say that people are leaving because they don't have enough PTO.
No, Madam Chair, I've not said that.
Have you heard people say, "I'm leaving because of the pay"?
I do not recall off the top of my head. As far as compensation is concerned, we do have some people in exit interviews that we can pull those up specifically and say, compensation would be one of the things that has come up before, in terms of exit interviews.
So if we're, if we're using this money for compensation, then it's really not a savings?
So it helps fund, it helps fu, it helps fund the commitments that we've made to fire and law enforcement, as well as gives us opportunity, because what, I don't have the exact number of what we committed to, but for the sheriff and fire to increase those wages, do you, do you remember that number?
On an annual basis, it was one-point-four.
That was close. It was the budget amendment from last week, do you?
But we approved those, we approved those increases, knowing that that would come out of the General Fund. We weren't talking about how to, you know, that they were contingent on anything else we might decide down the road. So I'm a little confused why that would be an issue.
Because if we were able to save nine-hundred from the, what was funded by ARPA and has expired, when we look.
But that's separate from this.
Well, in my mind, it's not, because my ultimate goal is to be physically responsible to the taxpayers, and in this plan, I feel like adding this extra twenty-six hours is going to add another financial layer when we already have financial responsibilities to our judges.
It's not necessarily adding 26, it's only 26 as opposed to 40.
Right.
So it's still, it's actually showing fiscal responsibility by not voting and having the 40. It's actually just 26, it's not additional 26 per se because they had 40.
But the 40 was funded through ARPA.
I understand that.
And the ARPA funds going away. And so as a general practice, when those grant funds go away, that's a big finding, that's another burden on the taxpayers that, and for me, I would rather work to see where we are after this change in January and then maybe reevaluate. But I know, and I've heard from our directors in our meeting on Monday, that this does create challenges for the departments. And I wish Chief Robinson was here, I know Chief Perkins, you were there.
It sounds like it's just those two. That's why I asked last week if they can create, if a, a policy can be created for first responders as opposed to everybody, blanket it for everybody, because that is, seems to be where the problem lies. And I wouldn't want all the, all the employees to have to, it's like mass punishment, for lack of a better word. So if there's a department that's abusing it, not using it correctly or something, maybe we should look at creating a policy for that department as opposed to making everybody else, you know?
Well, I think taking the sick, getting rid of what was ARPA-funded helps them a good bit because now that does not create the short, short notice and things like that. PTO, it works differently for them. So from what I've been told by them as well as the directors, this is a good move because it helps them become more efficient in their departments. But as for the extra time, I would much rather reserve that funding for future opportunities for, for us to invest in the employees, if, if available. I mean, again, we're still looking at the budget for next year. You know, I think we've got time before the end of the year to reevaluate and see as we work through the budget exactly where we will fall. Because I know, as you guys know, that a lot of the citizens in the community still need relief.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, any other comments you want to add?
So we had a motion and a second.
Right, okay. All right, I'll make a call for the vote. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please note for the record. Thank you.
Okay. We have one more provision, which is the revised PTO payout structure. This portion that I'm going to read would be for new hires only, for those hired on or after January 1, 2026. The proposed PTO payout structure for anyone hired on that time, less than one year would be 0%. One to five years would be 50%, five to 10 years, 75%. Those hired 10 years or more, 100%. Employees that are hired before January 1, 2026 would remain under the current policy. The current policy states that if you've been here for less than five years, it's 75% and five or more years is 100%. So that is the third provision that is before you this afternoon for discussion.
Are we discussing it? Well, Madam Chair, I move to approve the amended PTO accrual policy.
Maybe the PTO payout.
PTO payout structure. Revised PTO payout structure.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in.
With effective date of January 1, 2026.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we have board comment. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I would just like to say, I know that it was stated that ARPA funds were used for, you know, what they were, when they came about, what they were used for. But I just don't want to negate the fact that some of the things that the ARPA funds were used for were a necessity. I totally agree with getting, not doing things, not using, continuing to use our funds for things that necessarily we don't have to have. And it was mentioned about our assistants. I will say our assistants, well, those liaisons that work for post one and post two are educated and qualified to do those jobs. Now, also, and they have experience, will have experience in doing so. So just because we used those funds to start something does not negate the fact that we still need that particular position and it can be funded because it has value, it has been a value to the Board of Commission. May not been to necessarily chair because she, they don't work with her. But for post one and for post, let me just speak for post one, it has definitely.
You can speak for post two, too.
Okay, all right. They have been a value add for us, being that we are part-time commissioners. The citizens have full-time access to us and that is through our liaisons. So if the liaisons are part-time and we are part-time, what days do we work? What days can you reach us? I think it would be more difficult if that were not, if that was the case, that everybody was part-time. Now, I know people don't think that we need them and, you know, we shouldn't be paying as much as what we're paying for, they get paid more than me. If anybody should be mad, it should be me. I'm working hard, too, but they get paid more than I do. And I'm fine with that because of the value that I see that they add to me and to our citizens. Yes, we are definitely dedicated to be physically responsible and we will do all that we can do to save money and kind of lighten the burden for our taxpayers. That is our main priority. And we can't do this work without the help that we get sometimes from our constituent liaisons. So I want to put that out there. Also, to remind everyone that KCRB is doing a shredding event on 9/27 from 9:00 to 1:00 at 1400 Parker Road, and that's at Wheeler Park. And our constituent liaison services from Congressman David Scott's office is on Friday. It's every Friday from 10:00 to 12:00 at our library. And yesterday on my, I was driving, I was out and I was driving by and I saw a fire truck on the side of the street. And I said, and I saw a family, two boys and a, and a lady. And I said, "What are you doing?" I said, "You know what, maybe she's showing him the truck." So they were there, they were out on Smyrna, no, Smyrna, yes, Smyrna Road, doing flushing, the hydrant flushing. So I had a little video, I took a video to show you what was going on. And that is Sergeant Taylor, who took the time to talk to the young, the young kids that were next door. She said she was there and her truck was parked there and they, she just said, "Come over and see what's going on in the truck." So I thought that was very nice and that shows that our firefighters are, you know, just doing, just doing extra things while they're working. So I want to shout out Sergeant Taylor for doing that. And those are my comments.
So I'd like to thank HR, had to, started to say talent management. I'd like to thank them for the really outstanding employee appreciation event on Saturday. I just, when I pulled up, I just, it made me happy to see all those employees and their families and the children. Director, our chief, chief COO Sue was there with her twin granddaughters. Everybody was having a great time. So I, it, I know that took a lot of planning and a lot of effort, but I really appreciate that. I have an opportunity next week to go to Indianapolis for the Council for State Governments Justice Center Advisory Board Meeting. I've talked before about that advisory board, that their initiative for 2030 is regarding recovery and health and wellness is around families. We focused in the last 10 years a lot through the stepping up initiative on the person who's in recovery or transitioning out of jail or looking to get into recovery and get them into treatment. But this new initiative is about families because a person isn't just an isolated person, it, it, it's a whole family system. So I'm, I'm looking forward to what information I can bring back. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to say that I was excited to attend Georgia Piedmont Technical College's first board meeting in Rockdale County this morning. And it was led by our former Madam Clerk, of course, Ruth Wilson. And I will say Dr. Holston and his team at Georgia Piedmont, they are doing an excellent job and we look forward to their work here in the community, elevating the education and knowledge base and workforce development opportunities for people in our community. The EB Training Center will be opening early next year. And so we are looking right now for people who are interested in going through that training program. So kudos to the Board of Georgia Piedmont Technical College for the campus that's going to be right here in our community doing good work. And then I'd also like to say that Core Business Enterprises opened this morning at Restoration Storehouse. And I know that Commissioner Smith and I were able to attend and see one of our fellow Rotarians doing good work in the community. And she will be working to connect with businesses and provide training as well as other services to elevate what, the work that they're doing and strengthening how they can grow their businesses. And so, of course, I invited her to work collaboratively with our procurement division and be knowledgeable about the process so that she can also be aware of how to walk businesses right through our planning and development office and the process thereof, as well as work with procurement so that everybody has opportunities right here in our community. And with that, I would like to ask Madam Clerk if we need, have a need for executive session?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair, for the purpose of discussing land acquisition.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we enter to executive session for the purpose of discussing land acquisition.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. And we thank you for attending our meeting today. I did want to give you a final update from Director Brian Kelly on our transportation program that included full-depth reclamation on Bethel Road. I know a lot of citizens have been very excited about the progress. And so, this is why we can't pay all the roads. The length of that road is 1.6 miles and the total cost was 3, $3,155,000. So, there's your numbers, did I correct?
What, what we replaced is 1.6, that total length is 4.5.
Oh, the total is 4.5? Okay, that makes me feel better. Okay. Okay, but 4.5 was the total of improvements and, okay, very good. Thank you very much. All right, thank you for attending today. Please remember that we are moving our Board of Commissioner Town Hall meetings around the county for the convenience of our citizens. So please catch us tonight at 6:00 PM. We will be at Costley Mill Event Center and we will be holding the town hall from 6:00 o'clock to roughly 7:30. But we'll be there to answer questions and interact with the public, so we look forward to seeing you there. Can I get the address for the location?
Yeah, it says 2599 Salem Church, Conyers.
Okay, very good, thank you and have a good day.